All right, we are going to get started. This is the regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, June 5th, 2025. We start all of our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible in the best of all.
Let's go to introductions. Kristy, we'll start with you.
Kristy Rochell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herme, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer, Dumas Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse. Let's move to the approval minutes. I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer, do you miss?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? We actually do, and so, Neil, you just didn't, and Bree, you just didn't fill out cards, but let's move this item forward if you don't mind, with your deference, Commissioner. We have a by leave about the establishment of our Hamilton County Accessibility, by leave for, the Hamilton County Accessibility Advisory Board, and so we are very excited about this initiative brought to us by some of the advocates in the community, and they wanted to say a few words, but before you do that, I just want to say that this is a move by this county commission to make sure that we are putting a lens on the work that we do and making sure that people with different levels of accessibility have access to our programs, whether it's employment, whether it's our facilities, no matter what it is, we want to be on time in this space, and so an advisory group made up of individuals that have lived experience, I think will be extremely helpful in advising the work that we do. So, very grateful that two of the advocates here, Neil and Bree, brought this to us, and we are at a moment in time, and I was telling Neil, this is pretty quick for us to have this idea percolate up from you two and from the advocates and folks in the community to a moment where we are passing this to establish this committee and commission. So I'm super excited about this, and so I know, Neil, you wanted to say a few words, and then we will move forward with the by leave, but Commissioner Dumas, I want to turn it to you first, and then, Neil, if you don't mind coming forward.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you guys have done in your committee. This is a long time coming officially. I mean, we oftentimes, as was mentioned earlier, are not being physically disabled, so they need to fix that, and they need to add that, but we don't advocate for it because we don't have to be directly impacted, so I thank you so much for this coming forward.
Go ahead.
And on behalf of, hold up here, on behalf of Bree and myself, I just want to thank you two and Commissioner Reese as well for kind of the speed at which you have told all of us, like, thank you for bringing this forward, we're excited, and, you know, it's been two, three months, and I know that's very quick for even Deer Park City Council, I can imagine it's very quick for you all, so thank you so much for your expedience with this and your passion for helping us out.
Thank you, and we're really looking forward to convening and then getting recommendations from the group to advise the work that we do, so thank you again. Commissioner Reese, we're talking about by leave number four, which is the establishment of the Accessibility Advisory Board, and so we're poised to pass it. Did you want to say a couple of words?
I just want to say I definitely support this, it's in the right direction, and so looking forward to the recommendations, but I think this is an important move for the county, so thank you.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leave four.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer, do you miss?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes. Thank you, thank you all for being here.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, let's go back to our normal agenda, we'll go to comments and motions, Commissioner Summer, do you miss?
Thank you so much, just a few comments from, I'll just move forward from there. I participated in the Habitat for Humanity, their 700th home dedication, and I went there representing the board, and as we know, Habitat for Humanity, they've done great things, looking forward to 800 in near future. I also participated in the Veterans Appreciation Day press conference, and as everyone should know, the board is really trying to advocate and to do more for veterans and have them do more for themselves, so there was a great appreciation last year, and there's going to be a repeat of that even greater this year. And then I attended the Investment Advisory Committee with the Treasurer and President Treehouse to look at where our investments are, we're looking in good shape right now, so, and also attended the Visits since the Board of Directors meeting, and I attended the, I celebrated the career of Darryl Haley, who we, no one wanted him to leave, but we understand he just wants to spend more time with his family, some quality time, so that was a great celebration, we wish him well. I know after he left, we were reading about maybe price hikes, I don't know, but anyway, things are changing, you know, so. Inside the Lighthouse, I did a virtual, had a virtual meeting with the Lighthouse, and all the services that they provide are far beyond what I could ever think about, and so they've really added on more and more services, so I congratulate them. I had a conversation, phone conversation with Trina Jackson as it relates to reentry and House Bill 5, which is gonna, I don't know if Anson is here, I'm pretty sure it's five.
Yes.
Okay, is that right, Anson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and how it's going to impact those that are incarcerated, and whether they'll be incarcerated longer and, so we are looking forward to, I hope, that the board will write a letter saying that this House bill may be detrimental to our incarcerated persons. And then I had an interview with David Holfes, who is in charge of Soapbox, I did one interview before, but he did give me a call as it relates to villages and townships, there's a bill afoot, House Bill 331, that is looking at the possibility of villages and townships every 10 years to be audited by a group of people, which the commissioner, one commissioner, would be on this committee, and whether or not I thought that was appropriate for villages and townships, should it be audited maybe five years instead of 10 years, and whether or not we, I looked at it a more positive way, how can we help our villages and townships before they get in trouble? Oftentimes, we hear about it when they're, you know, trying to get money from the state or some, we, I know a few, and we know a few, who are having some trouble administratively, financially, and how can we help those villages to maintain their existence if they need to? And then I attended, of course, I'm sure more would be said about the Black Music Walk of Fame celebration of black music, hopefully those films are locked up somewhere with us dancing on the stage.
Somewhere not to be seen.
Yeah. But Commissioner Reese, it was just a fun time, I just, I wish we could just do that more often, yeah, that was really good, and a lot of hard work I know went into it, so I appreciate it, and you'll be talking more about it. And then finally, last night, I went to Best Point, they do awesome work with young people, and so it was their 100th, 161st annual meeting, and I received the first inaugural Bridge Builder Award, and I was just so blown away, I mean, I knew about it, I actually got the call on my birthday, what a great birthday present, and I got up there and I got a little emotional, because for me, I've gotten lots of awards before, but it was always about what I've done, what I've achieved, and this was so important to me because it was about who I have impacted, what I've given to other people, and so I had, I looked, I had mascara coming down, I thought this morning, maybe I'll suit in mascara, but it was the cheap mascara, but, but everybody in the room was tearful, and you could hear a pin drop because they know it was from my heart, so I want to thank Best Point for their acknowledgement, that's all I have.
Congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reese.
Thank you, I join in that too, congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Great, and I can, wow, we have, we missed a week, so yeah, I can't remember all the stuff I did, but I will, I wanted to highlight too, the Veterans Appreciation, and online right now, people can register, if you register, you get free parking and free food, so you want to register so you can get your ticket for food and for parking, and I'm super excited about that, going into our second year doing it, last year, Great American Ballpark, this year, we're at Sawyer Point, so we'll see how that works, I'm very excited to see how that's going to work, but we also will have on the spot, I'm told that these, these big mobile units, of course, the 513 relief bus, but these big mobile units where you can get approved on the spot for your veterans' benefits, and I think that's going to be huge, so, and of course, they'll have more music and entertainment, and we're excited about that, and the P. N. Everson Price All-Star Band was there last year, they'll be back this year, and some additional bands, so it's just going to be a lot of fun for the whole family, and we're focused on veterans and those in military service, so if you're currently in the military service, you are also invited to this, and we've got a lot of great partnerships with the clerk of courts and others that will be there with on the spot, and last time, I thought was interesting, we don't talk a lot about it, but something I don't think anybody had in the country, we had our, our Veterans Court was held there, right there at the event at Great American Ballpark, and they expunged a veteran on the spot, Judge Nestor, so I thought that was really, really cool, so I'm excited about that, but we'll keep talking about it every week so people know to register, and if you know someone in the military or veteran, please let them know so they can register. I would just ask that maybe the 513relief.org have a link that maybe the 513relief.org have a link on that page as well, because it's quicker and easier to say that website. I know Veteran Services has a longer website, a longer URL. And so we just want to make sure we're working together. So we should be able to, you know, click that and take them to their, to their page so the people can register. Also, I know I attended a lot of stuff and I can't even remember all of it. But I do want to highlight the, yesterday, June is also Black Music Month. And just a trivia tidbit, Ed Wright, who was from Cincinnati, was one of the instrumental players in getting Black Music Month recognized on a national level, all the way from the White House. And he was from here. He was at WCIN Radio here in Cincinnati. And he's one of the first African Americans to have an executive position at a, at a record label. So he, and when he passed away, Billboard Magazine did a big article on him. That's how big of a figure he was. So we have Black Music Month because of him. And currently, he's down at the SISA Black Music Walk of Fame. He's one of our influencers, but he is on the board down there, the video board. And people could go down there and learn more about Ed Wright and others. We've got about 80 people in the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. So very excited about that. With that, we have a kickoff, this is our fourth year, in partnership with Hard Rock Casino, Black Music Month kickoff yesterday. And I want to thank my colleagues for being there and being supportive. And it shows that we can legislate, but we also got some good moves. I don't think, we might want to battle some other county commissioners, a dance battle for charity or something. But people had a great time. It was a packed house at the Hard Rock Casino yesterday. And I want to thank everyone that had a role in helping us put that together. As you could see there, I want to thank Jeff Aludo and the entire county team that was there and helping. Of course, our clerks were there. And Mary Maui was there, and Trevina, and Scott, and so many others. Bridget and her team was there. We want to thank them. I want to thank my staff, Beta Stevens, my chief of staff. I want to thank Jackie Taggart Boyd with my staff. And then I also want to acknowledge Phil Beck, of course, he is the project manager of the banks, that was also there. Thank you very much. And Holly Christman was there. I think Holly started to doing some shoulder moves too. I mean, we had a great time. Anson, I saw you back there waving your hands from side to side. So Robert Bell was there. And then I saw the, our director of our small business, Greg Forte was there. I think some people were talking to him about some small business ideas. I wanted to thank the Hard Rock staff. They did a great job rolling out the red carpet. We are blessed to have our casino a hard rock brand here in Cincinnati. And the music, it just ties us all in. And I want to thank Justin, the CEO, and his team, the Urban League, who has always been a partner. And I want to thank the CEO, Kristy Coons, for that. Lincoln Ware, who's the chair of the volunteer committee, and the volunteer committee members, I think they've done an excellent job. We've got some big heavy heaters in the Walk of Fame. And of course, Procter and Gamble, who funds our stars themselves. And we want to thank them for public-private partnerships and a lot of other partners that we also have to help us be able to do this. We want to thank them as well. So we've got, you know, Greater Cincinnati Foundation and Krogers and so many different entities, First Financial, that help in try to, you know, make sure this stuff is free for everybody. So I want to announce who our inductees are this year. We cover Ohio and the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, and some ties to Southwest Ohio. We have the great late jazz legend Nancy Wilson will be inducted this year. And her son will be coming. And that's a big deal because they don't really come out as much. We have a special tribute by Regina Bell, Grammy nominated Regina Bell, who was her mentee. So we were grateful for that. We also have the Ohio Players, the funk sound that came from this area, Southwest Ohio. We have the legendary gospel legend, Dottie Peoples will be going in. And we have a group that was once called The Mascots. And they recorded their first big record here at King Records as The Mascots. It was their breakout song. But when they went to the DJ, one of the DJs in Cleveland, Ohio, he says, man, you got to get a new name. Can't be The Mascots. And so they named themselves after him. And his name was OJ. So that is why the mighty OJs will be inducted into the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. They also are in the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. So very excited about that. We also had several folks go in as influencers. You could go to our website and see all of their names and their backgrounds. And it's just, it's just remarkable. So I wanted to highlight that. The next thing that's happening for Black Music Month, several activities are happening for the SISA Black Music Walk of Fame. Remember, our goal is to get to 250,000, quarter of a million visitors. I think that's impressive not to have a marketing budget, but we're close. So please go down there. They've got clickers so they know what the real numbers are. We are close, but we want to make that number by July 26. I also want to thank the SISA Music Festival as well, who is also a partner. On Father's Day, June 15, Father's Day, June 15, at 1:00 p.m., we will have a Father's Day celebration at the SISA Black Music Walk of Fame. It's free. It's focused, the theme is The Good Guys. There's a new song by our inductee, one of our influencer inductees, Big Rob, will be releasing his world premiere of the song called The Good Guys. And it's dedicated to fathers, good fathers that are throughout. And that will take place on Father's Day, June 15, at 1:00 p.m. It's free. You'll get to go down there. He's going to do some autographs. He's got some t-shirt giveaways. And you'll get a photo of your father. So come on down. And we've got a beautiful backdrop because I think Jeff, we got an award, didn't we, for the best landscaping? And he loves the landscaping part, the best landscaping. We got an award for that. So now we already got the backdrop. You just come on down with your fathers. And there will be also some giveaways with SISA Music Festival, ticket giveaways, the best dressed father and all that. It's going to be great. So we have that. And then Wednesday, before we have, I know Commissioner Dumis will be leading on Juneteenth, we'll have our Juneteenth flag raising. But the day before, on Wednesday, we will be at the library. And the library, a partnership with the SISA Black Music Walk of Fame, will be opening a new exhibit. We will have exhibit at the library. And that unveiling will take place on Wednesday, June 18, at 1:00 p.m. at our Hamilton County newly remodeled main library. And so all are welcome. It's going to be free. We had an exhibit, we were on residency at the airport for, I told her, three months and we end up with three years. So I thank Candace Roth for that. But now we have a permanent place at our main library. And so you want to see that new exhibit with some new artifacts that the inductees have donated. So that will be happening with a music by the YOLO Band. I also want to thank P N Everson Price. She was also the emcee yesterday. And she's always a lot of fun and did a great job. And then lastly, July 26, please put on your calendars, we will have our 2025 induction ceremony and celebration. And we'll celebrate with a National Line Dance Fest at the Andrew Brady Center. And that will start at 12:00 noon. We will march in, starting lineup at 11:00 a.m. And hopefully, great news to show that we have gotten to our goal of 250,000 visitors. So just wanted to give that. And we'll have that available so people can participate. So that's what I have for the SISA Black Music Walk of Fame. Now, my last thing I do want to highlight on for my colleagues, Drake Hospital, my understanding has, will be shutting down. That is great concern. My understanding, a lot of people will be losing their jobs. It'd be hard to, you know, it's hard to get a job now. And I'm concerned. My mother was at Drake Hospital. Drake changed. It used to be, you go to Drake Hospital, it was over. And so when they told me my mom was going to Drake Hospital, I almost passed out. But she was going there for rehab in terms of her, how she was fighting MS at the time, multiple sclerosis. So they did a great job. Now Drake is, I've gotten a lot of calls from people that are concerned about the Drake. I don't know all the history of Drake Hospital, but I do think as we look at our workforce development and all that, the group's job, Ohio Means Jobs and everything, I would like to report on what's happening with Drake, what's going to happen to these patients, and what's going to happen to these workers. Because some people have been there 20 years, or one lady says she was like one year shy of retirement. And now she's going to lose everything. So I do want to have a report or some kind of report out to us, what's going to happen with Drake Hospital. It's a major, it was very important to us in this county to have Drake Hospital available. So just wanted to put that out there. And if you could get back with us, maybe Mr. Aludo. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few things. A couple of them are personnel related. So my current intern, Victoria Strawbridge, is leaving. This is her last day. So I want to thank you, Victoria, for your service to the county. She has really been exemplary. She's very, very bright and has done a lot of good work for the county. So thank you for your service and your willingness to do that. And our new intern, Trey Warden, is sitting next to her. This is his first day. So welcome to the county, Trey. We're glad to have you. And hopefully, you know, you will find it as interesting as others have to be an intern, learn about the workings of the county. It's just fascinating stuff. And so we're thrilled to have you. And then we've got a fellow here, Morgan Dalton, is in the back of the room, one of the fellows that we passed. So she's in the back. Raise your hand, would you? Or stand up. Why don't you just stand up? We can't see. You're too far in the back. There we go. All right. So just want to, welcome, welcome to the county. She's sitting next to Josh back there. Then a couple other things I wanted to highlight. I did participate in the Chamber of Commerce Local Government Day. Along with Jeff, we talked about, they had the city, they had the county, they had others, the state, talk about what's going on in local government. So I was glad to represent the county there and talk about all things Hamilton County. We covered a lot of ground in that forum. We also had our pride flag raising. We do this every year. And June is Pride Month here in Hamilton County and all over the country. And so we raised the flag. We had more people than ever come out and celebrate with us. Ahead of our ERG, Josh was there in addition to other advocates. And we are thrilled to have that flag flying throughout the month of June. So thank you, Josh, for all your work in helping put that together and ongoing work throughout the year. I also, we had the One Ohio meeting yesterday, the Region Two meeting, about how we are dispersing the distribution money that's coming from the settlement at the state level related to opioids. And so One Ohio, the leadership came down, Alicia Nelson, to highlight one of the programs that has been funded through the R2 Foundation. So we had our meeting at Talbot House. They've got a reentry facility nearby, or I'm sorry, not reentry, recovery housing nearby. And so we were there to talk about that award and talk about some of the other awards that we have made as a board to help try to curb the issue related to addiction in this community. So I was glad to participate in that. Also, the Black Walk of Fame celebration, I feel like maybe we all need to just do walk-up music every time we go somewhere, right? So, because that, it's great fun. I really think we should, should take that seriously. Or repent?
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner, I don't know. No, no. But it was good fun. It was good fun. And it's an annual celebration of the, not only the Walk of Fame, but also black culture, black history, black excellence in this community. And so it was bigger than ever. It was a lot of fun. I'll look forward to the next event for the inductees. But it was good fun and well done. It was really well produced and well put together. So thank you for inviting me to attend and participate. And then last night, I went to the CDF, the Community Development Fund, who is our critical partner as we're trying to build more affordable housing in this community. They have new offices over by Findlay Market. And so they had an open house. And I spoke there and told them how grateful we are for that partnership. Without them, we could not be doing what we're doing in affordable housing. So I was really glad to celebrate their opening of their new space. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk quickly about what's happening at the state level regarding the budget. So we have been tracking the budget and all things. But primarily, what's going on with stadium funding in the budget. And so as we all know, we've been advocating for quite some time for funding for Paycor Stadium. Commissioner Reese, with Governor Dewine last year, I went up to, and it's just a matter of who's the president at the time. And so I went up and visited with the leader of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, and the Finance Chair on the Senate side, making sure that Hamilton County was on the radar as they were talking about the budget and funding for stadiums throughout the state. And so my understanding is that there was an announcement made about state funding. And so there is, they're using unclaimed fund, funds. So there's over $3 billion in a fund that is unclaimed funds. And so they are releasing 1.7 of that funding for stadiums. 600,000 is being peeled off for Cuyahoga. And then 1.1 remains for other localities, jurisdictions, governments to apply for that money for stadiums in their communities. And so it is not done. It has to pass through conference committee. And so that is upcoming. But we are optimistic that there will be something in the final budget that's passed by the legislature to address the need for some financial participation from the state as we look to renovate and improve our stadium here in Cincinnati at Paycor. And so we'll see how it goes. But that's the current update. And I just wanted to make people aware of that. I saw something recently that we were left out. We were not left out. It's simply a different mechanism than, the funding mechanism that is being used for Cuyahoga County does not work for Hamilton County. And so we did not want to be part of a funding mechanism for them that simply does not work for us. And so this other piece, this 1.1, remains. And that is what is in response to the request that we made collectively about stadium funding. So I just wanted to put that on folks' radars. And that's all I have. Jeff, I don't know if you have additional comments, but I also know that we have quite a few by leaves.
We do. Just a few comments first, to some comments from earlier. We will keep the board apprised through Government Strategies Group on the state process and how that proceeds through conference. We know about as much as you indicated, Commissioner Drehouse, at this point. Also, Commissioner Reese, I know Lisa Webb has been contacted about the Drake issue. So we will follow up with a report to the board on that. It's obviously a concern to the administration as well. As you said, there's a long history between the county and Drake. As we've been sitting here, Michael Patton texted me and indicated that they'll be looking into dislocated worker assistance, that type of thing. So they'll be, will be bringing the tools of the county to bear to make sure that there's as seamless as possible transition for folks out there as we can. But we'll get the board more information on this as we move along. Also, as was stated, do just want to say generally, I just want to congratulate again Darryl Haley for all of his years of public service. Had the chance to meet with him the other day, right before he left for good. And just congratulated him on his years of service. I know that Metro sort of is in good hands with Andy I L. He's already reached out. We're establishing the same cadence of communications that Darryl and I had. So be sure to keep the board apprised of operational issues as Andy brings them to our attention. And I know that he'll be reaching out to the board and as will the sort of board members as well. We did do another onboarding this morning for new staff. Trey was from your office, Commissioner, was in the onboarding. I also just wanted to note that we onboarded the electrician over at Facilities. And just wanted to note that they are continually out there doing great work. I just got a picture sent to me of the electricians from the county out installing a new warning siren out in Green Township. So given the severe weather climate that we're in, just our Facilities Department, in conjunction with EMA, continues to do great work in that regard. The only other comment I have before my by leaves, I'm very intrigued by this best dressed father contest.
Oh.
I've got some sweater vests that are dying to come back out now that it's I, I've got some sweater vests that are, that are dying to come back out now that it's summer, so.
Who's judging?
Saying, just saying. Uh, let's see. Um, by-leave items today, commissioners, in your packet, by-leave one. We actually have two by-leaves. By-leaves one and two are both, uh, drug interdiction grants, um, uh, for, through the Sheriff's Office. Uh, by-leave one is a resolution authorizing, uh, an agreement, uh, with, uh, a grant agreement with Recovery Ohio MDI at $339,114. Uh, this is a drug interdiction grant for the Regional Narcotics Unit that helps to fund, uh, several deputies in our renew office. Commissioner Dreehouse, if you want me to go through all these or you want to take them one at a time, I'm happy to.
Um, let's go through all of them.
Okay. Uh, by-leave number two is a resolution authorizing, uh, a, an agreement between, uh, the county and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is also a grant, this is a grant to combat, uh, drug trafficking in Hamilton County, $43,474. By-leave number three, uh, is our annual, uh, activity down at, at the practice fields at Paycor related to, uh, the sod replacement for the, the, uh, practice fields, uh, in, uh, advance of training camp occurring. Uh, this is on a $174,600. Uh, that's actually lower than the $250,000 that was budgeted for it this year. Um, item number five is a resolution approving the report of the Fact Finder in State Employee Relations, uh, Board Case Number 2024 MED 090907. Uh, this is regarding stadium trades in County, County Stadium and Parking Department. And by-leave six, the final by-leave, commissioners, uh, this is, uh, an, an agreement, uh, also relating to Paycor. Uh, this is regarding, uh, some, the purchase of certain equipment, steel and other equipment, uh, related to the project for the club escalators, which actually won't occur until 2026. Uh, this was part of the MOU that we brought forward in late April, early May. Uh, we advised at that point in time that there were, uh, some projects that needed to, because of the very long lead time on procurement. Uh, the steel in this case on, on this project, uh, will be upwards of 52 weeks or so to procure. So that's why we are, um, advancing this now. There will be other contracts related to this project, but they won't come forward until, um, later on this year. But we wanted to get this going because if we hope to have a chance of doing this project in 2026, uh, we have to move forward on the procurement of the equipment and the steel now. That's at 1.525 million. Those are all six by-leaves, commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Summer Ademis.
Thanks, Jeff, for that. Um, the only comment I may have would be, um, by-leave five, I just want to thank all of our staff and the unions also for working together to, um, look at the stadium trades, uh, and what we need to do. And we're here to accept a Fact Finder, a report. And I, and actually, uh, by-leave six, uh, is to look at the safety in the stadium. Of course, we have to have it, uh, be a safe place for our, our community that are coming in and anyone who's coming in. Um, so I'm certainly, you know, approve of that. That's all I would have.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Reese.
Uh, yes. I, um, I have a question. Uh, so by-leave three with the, um, practice field sod replacement, is that happening now or is this for next year?
Is, it is for this year. Uh, it's part of our, um, annual maintenance activities down there this year. So we do it pretty much every year. There are some years where, um, our, our folks down at, uh, at the stadiums do a really good job of landscaping. And there's some years that just on maintenance, they're able to keep the grass, um, as robust as it needs to be so that they don't have to do it every year, but for the most part, it's an every year type of thing.
Okay. Cause I know they're practicing now, so will we?
Yes, so this, this is for the full training camp.
Full training camp, got it, okay. And then, um, by-leave six, I probably would want to have that pulled out if we're gonna do a package, uh, and, and vote on this individually. This deals with, uh, the MOU. And, um, I still truly believe that while we're in a negotiation, uh, to try to cut the cost on the taxpayers, uh, I voted no because I was uncomfortable voting on a MOU that, that increased over 60 million additional dollars to the current lease that everybody knows is bad. Um, although they have some things where we might can get out and all that. But the bottom line is I think when you're in a negotiation, for me, I cannot à la carte. You keep all your cars and then try to get a package. So this will not happen until, uh, 2026.
Correct.
Um, so that means that the elevators are working. I, I, I want to make sure that these elevators are working currently, right? There's no risk right now.
So we have two projects, Commissioner, so these are the escalators specifically. Um, there is a refurbishment project and then these are for the, these are for the replacement in the new club escalators. So this is the long-term solution. That would be a 2026, 2026 project. Um, there is a refurbishment project, uh, to take care of immediate needs, but this, this is the project that ensures the long-term sustainability and safety of those in the club areas.
Right. So from now until 2026, the elevators will be safe because you got to refurbishment. Uh, my concern is not having every single week an additional thing that I believe should be in the overall negotiation. We only have a couple more weeks left to June 30th. And I think that, uh, whether we order it today or if we order it in July, uh, after we find out what the Bengals are gonna do, uh, I think would be a better thing. Because if we say in the MOU that we will not be putting up, according to what you said, we not be putting up the 60 million if we don't get, uh, a deal, then why would we be having all this equipment sitting there, uh, in, in the closet? So just for me, I think from a principle standpoint, going into a negotiation, we already have a bad lease. I just don't want to add on any additional appetizers, uh, before we get the real deal done. Um, so for me, I think the timing is not good for me. Uh, and I won't be able to support it. And also understanding that I want all elevators and escalators working, whether you are on the club level or whether you in the cheap seats three, well, there are no cheap seats, or whether you up in the rafters. Because that's what I heard from a lot of people is that when you go to the rafters, the seats are uncomfortable. The escalator is not working and nobody cares. But when you get to the suite level, all of a sudden we got new carpet, new, new things so they can go up on the prices. And I want, uh, the people in 300s to, to be able to also have some new things. I know we refurbished the seats, uh, $39 million. I don't think we went up to the, the rafters. I think we only did it for the people that are, uh, in the suite level. So with that today, I cannot support this. And, uh, I can't support anything that's not in the current lease until we get a new deal. And I think that's important because we're in some pretty tight negotiations right now. We need to make sure it's like playing cards. You hold your cards. Don't throw, don't throw the king down and the queen down. We got to hold our cards because they holding they cards. And hopefully we come out with a, a deal that we can say, yes, we're together. Uh, so that's why I can't support this. Uh, but the other ones, uh, that's in the, I will to go with the facade program that's already in the current lease. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, and just to, um, address by-leave number six, I'm happy to pull that out, um, and, and vote on it separately. Uh, my view of this is that it's, it's two things. One is making sure that the escalators and elevators are working in good working order. I get a lot of complaints about the escalators at the stadium. And, uh, I don't want to have a situation where they're not working or unsafe or, um, you know, not up to, to standards. So I, I, I will support it for that reason. In addition to, um, this being part of a larger agreement that allowed the Bengals in the NFL to spend $120 million on the county asset, which is Paycor Stadium. So I am in favor of having the team in the NFL participate in that financial stack in that way. And so supported the MOU and seeing that this is part of that agreement, I am willing to, uh, support this. And this vertical transportation issue has been a big deal, um, down at the stadium. It's one of the primary things that I think we're trying to accomplish, um, in the renovations. And so I think we need to continue to address those needs. And so. Yes, ma'am. Yep.
So, uh, Jeff, this has nothing, uh, in this 1.5 for refurb, refurbishment at all.
So there's, there's two projects. There's the refurbishment project, which the board approved, uh, several weeks ago. This is the, um, the, the complete, um, uh, sustainable solution for these long-term. So, uh, so you have the short-term project, you have the long-term project. This is the long-term project associated, uh, with the MOU that we passed back in, in May. Uh, and, uh, in, and it include, it's, it's the 1.5 part of the broader 64. Yes, but the, the two projects are the refurbishment and the long-term solution. This is the long-term solution.
And what is the urgency of passing it today?
The urgency today is that if we, uh, in, in accordance with the MOU, the idea was that we are, uh, trying to move forward to make sure that we can advance these projects in 2026, assuming that we get a deal with the team and we want to move forward on the broader capital project, that we have, uh, projects that are ready to go in 2026. And if we do not advance, there's a, a significant time urgency on this particular project because if we don't order the steel and the parts now, uh, this entire part of the project will not be able to happen in 2026. So it'll be another year of the, of a, of a Band-Aid fixing of escalators and elevators that we already know are kind of on a, on the, at the end of their life.
And you were saying if we don't order now, um, what would a week or two weeks from now matter?
My understanding, it's a good question. My understanding from the construction manager on this is that the, the, the construction time is already, uh, pressed from a schedule perspective significantly. And that these are, uh, the, the, the goal would be to begin construction as soon after the season concludes in '26 as possible. Uh, some of the steel is taking up to 52 weeks to procure. So we're probably already, um, a bit behind. But the, the thought is that we can still get it in, in that, in, in the, uh, offseason of 2026.
So we're hearing, uh, of course, about steel every day on the news and what's gonna happen with that. But I'm thinking about what Commissioner Reese was saying about, so we put this in and we vote on it. And then there are so many other elements in the MOU. Are we gonna put each element in to vote on? Um, is that how that's gonna work or not?
No, so this.
Because of the urgency of the steel?
This is the one project that we talked about when we brought the MOU forward, uh, that the, the main thing we would be committing to would be the procurement and the purchase, uh, of some equipment and some parts and steel, uh, really related to the escalators. The next things on this would not happen until later on this year. And by then we will know whether we have that comprehensive agreement with the team. And there was a provision in the agreement and the MOU that said the team or the county could essentially, um, back out of those commitments, um, if we don't have the ultimate deal. But this was the one part of it, uh, that we did say that we knew we would be moving forward on, uh, because of the timing associated with getting that project done.
But we're right in the middle of a lot of stuff right now, um, as it relates to, um, the Bengals and, and the county. Um, um, hmm. I'm feeling a little uncomfortable about voting for this right now. So when you talk about, um, pulling it out, I don't know, uh, if it's necessary to pull it out because, um, I mean, even by the end of this week, we may know something different about, something else. And, um, we will be meeting again very soon and wonder why we can't delay this until, rather than saying no. Not you saying no, but me saying no. Um, and I know it was part of the MOU, but I'm, 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 I'm not comfortable with it, uh, today.
Next, I, I know we were doing some adjustment on meeting schedules, commissioners. Um, Leslie, um, refresh my memory, the.
But I don't think a week has got to make a difference, I hear.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying is, 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 uh, are we, we're meeting again next week, correct?
We are.
Uh, is Tuesday or Thursday? We're meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, okay. If that's the board's prerogative to hold this item until next Thursday, uh, we can.
Rather than voting no, which I would also, um, I'd like to see what's going, uh, you know, with what we're in the middle of right now. Cause we'll know some things by next week, I'm sure.
Okay. So are you asking that we?
Table it, yeah.
Hold item number six. All right, so let's take item, by-leaves item one, two, three, and five. I'm going to ask that we pass those by-leaves.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Ademis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
All right, and then we will hold on by-leave six. But let, let's hold till next week. Let's say that, okay.
Thank you.
Can we, um, can I ask a question? Um, you keep saying we have a construction manager already on these projects. Is it, who is that? Who's the construction manager?
Currently, on, on these interim projects, Messer is, is the construction manager down there. Uh, they were the construction manager on the pre-renovation projects and on some of the, the, on the vertical transportation stuff, just to make that seamless because of the timing associated with it. Um, the long.
Will they be doing all the projects that's in there?
Uh, you mean the entire renovation project?
Yeah, and the MOU.
Uh, in, in the, in the MOU, no. There, there will, like, we will be, um, later on this year, uh, going out for a procurement for the broader, uh, scope of, 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 uh, architectural engineer partners, et cetera.
Yeah, I, I just want to put that on the table too because if they're not, you're saying our contract manager, who's not gonna necessarily, has to rebid for all this, is giving us advice on getting this deal. Just maybe when we talk, I need to get more understanding. If that's not gonna be the people to do the project and then they're advising on the project, I'm just, that, that's a little confusing. Um, and then lastly, let me just say, as a county, we got some elevators that aren't working for everyday citizens. This one out here, over at the Juvenile Court, over at the Main Court, we got a lot of elevator problems. I'd like to see an elevator package that's not just for the Bengals nine games, but an elevator package for the taxpayers that are using these elevators every day. So I just want to put that in your report whenever we get together. But, uh, when I look at it, I think we need a comprehensive elevator package because it's been dangerous getting on. I think even over at the jail, one time the elevator broke down. It was unsafe where the sheriff, the deputy sheriff in there was an inmate. It may have been, but we've been putting Band-Aids on all these elevators for a long time. So for me, I'd like to see a, if we're gonna discuss elevators, I'd like to see a comprehensive elevator. And maybe you have that, we can.
Well, I, 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 sure, and I can just say, right, so all of the elevators at the Justice Center have been, have been replaced. So there was a problem a couple of years ago on that. Uh, these elevators, actually, while we've been having some downtime issues with them, they are, actually are new elevators. So functionally, they are completely replaced. There has been some issues with the sensitivity of the door that has caused them to, um, to shut down essentially. Uh, and Facilities is addressing that through a fix that they'll, they're talking with us right now about. It's been inconvenient, I know, and, and I know Facilities is, is working on it. But structurally and functionally, they are new, safe, completely safe elevators. There's just been some, uh, sensitivity problems with the doors that we're trying to work through.
Oh, okay. Well, I just heard some stuff from judges and different people, so.
We are working on that at the mother, at the courts and over at 100 Broadway. So we have escal, we have elevator projects that we're moving throughout all of the buildings in the county, yes.
My point is those elevators are stair-stepped. They're not an urgent matter. This one's urgent. It's hard to say we urgent over here, but we gonna get around to you over at the courthouse and these other places. So for me, I just want to see like, what's the timetable on these other projects? And I'll be honest with you, whether it's new or old, if the thing is breaking down, I saw people trying to pay the property taxes and the thing was just, is broken down every other week. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about elevators, I want to have it in totality. All elevators that's under our preview. I want to make sure it has what they need because I heard from some judges that had some issues. So I just wanted to, maybe you can get back to us on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, let's move to our regular agenda. Todd Long, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering if I could interject one announcement before we go through all of this because I left it out. Commissioner Reese brought it up just a minute ago about, uh, the Juneteenth celebration. For those that are listening, will be June the 13th, uh, at 10:00 AM at the courthouse steps. So I wanted people to know about that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Todd Long is here to address the two items for the engineer.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, I've got a resolution today, uh, number one, for you, setting a viewing and hearing date for the vacation of a portion of Maple Drive and Cedar Drive in Sims Township. The petitioners are, uh, Mr. Carr, Mr. Griesman, and Minton. And the board received the petition communication on. communication on, uh, March the 6th, 2025. Next steps for this particular, um, resolution would be to set a viewing date of, uh, July 9th, 2025, a hearing date of July 17th, 2025. Uh, this will also require that the petitioners prepare and submit a survey plat to Hamilton County Engineers' Office. Uh, we will then evaluate that request for the vacation and provide a report back to the Board of Commissioners, uh, before the, uh, 17th, uh, July 17th hearing. Item number two is a resolution for the Sutton Road improvements between Kellogg Avenue northward to the Corporation Line in City of Cincinnati, uh, near Mount Washington. It's Project 502312. Uh, this resolution is to put this project out to bid. Uh, it's located in Anderson Township. Uh, the bid opening proposal is July 3rd, 2025. The engineer's estimate is $4,873,000, $73,784.50. In this particular instance, we have, uh, a sorta grant of $1,663,500. Uh, the Greater Cincinnati Water Works will be participating in this at a cost of $3,053,917. And the balance, under the permissive auto fund of the Engineers' Office, of $186,367.50. Uh, the estimated completion would be in August of 2026. It's substantially a water main project with a resurfacing, um, of the complete, of the entire project when we're finished.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Summer Dumas, any comments or questions?
Thanks, Todd. I really appreciate how you guys leverage the money that you have, so thank you.
Commissioner Reese?
Uh, no questions on, uh, these two items. Uh, Commissioner President, there is another item in here that is on our, um, consent agenda, I think, dealing with the, um, I think buying of salt or something. I didn't know if I could, I don't know if they'll be gone, or will you be here for that part, or can I?
I will stay.
Todd wants to stick around.
You want to stick around, Todd?
Yeah, all right.
We'll get, we'll have you back up on that.
Good enough, we're gonna get back to you. Uh, I'm gonna move that we approve of items one and two.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's run through the consent agenda items. Jeff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number three is your first consent agenda item. This is a budget adjustment, the amount of $732,016. Uh, this, uh, is money for care pods at the Justice Center. It shifts, uh, some of the 513 relief programming to the Family Services and Treatment Levy from the Indigent Care Levy, uh, and also makes some adjustments to various coroner's grants. Uh, item number four is the resolution that starts the process of estimating, uh, active monies to be awarded to public depositories, uh, and setting the meeting date for designation of those depositories. Uh, the resolution specifically, uh, talks about, um, the amount of money that the treasurer is looking to deposit with institutions, uh, in, in the county, uh, designating, uh, a date by which the board will determine eligible institutions, uh, for, through that process, um, and the date and the process for the, uh, for how those institutions apply to be depositories. Uh, item, uh, number five, uh, is a resolution authorizing, uh, an agreement with the, uh, count, between the county and the city of Blue Ash. Uh, this is for $200,000 and relates to the occupancy tax grants, uh, and this is a grant to Blue Ash for, uh, capital investment at the Cooper Creek Event Center. Item number six, uh, we are actually rejecting, uh, a bid that came in, uh, for a, uh, security booth. That is a, a rejection. Uh, both of the bidders, uh, had some administrative complications with their bids, uh, the necessitated rejection. Item number seven, uh, is a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Dodge Durango for EMA, Item number eight, uh, is a, an agreement with Convergent Technologies. This is for camera replacement installation and upgrades, as well as equipment, uh, at our, uh, Central Riverfront Garage. Uh, this is for things like blue light phones, emergency call buttons, security cameras, uh, $381,962. Item number nine, uh, has actually been pulled at the request of the sheriff. Item number 10, uh, is a resolution, this is the Road Salt, uh, uh, bid that was discussed earlier. Uh, this is for $509,820, on behalf of the Engineers' Office. Item number 11, uh, is an agreement with Perkins and Will, uh, for planning consulting services. This relates to the Tuesday staff meeting that we heard on the Reconnecting Communities Grant, $329,000. Item number 12, uh, is a resolution and agreement between the board and Monty Inc. Uh, this relates to the Enterprise Zone, uh, that the board had also heard about from Alloy. Uh, this is the 75% eight-year agreement that was previously discussed with the board in staff meeting. Uh, item number 13 is, uh, a resolution, these, this is an, an environmental services grant, uh, with Mount Airy Community Urban Redevelopment, uh, for a, for compost activities, $1,161. Item 14 is an agreement with SSA Group, uh, for, uh, waste sorting services at the Cincinnati Zoo, $15,000. Item 15 is an agreement with Lesoup, uh, uh, this is, uh, for a freezer for, for, for stored food operations, $7,496. Uh, item number 16 begins a set of items for JFS. Uh, the first, uh, item 16, uh, is Women Helping Women for Gender-Based Violence Education Training Services, $400,000. Item number 17 is an agreement with YWCA for Gender-Based, uh, Domestic Violence Education Training Services, $272,336. Item 18 is renewal number three of an agreement with Foundation of Love for Youth, uh, for group home services, $515,000. 19 is renewal number one and amendment number one with Beach Acres for Kinship Support Services, $250,000. Item 20 is a renewal number three with Hope Haven for Girls for Group Home Services, $500,000. Item 21 is renewal number one between the board and Youth Advocate Program for Kinship Caregiver Support Services, $676,567. Item 22 is an agreement with Second Chance Dayton Group Home LLC for Group Home Services, $200,000. Uh, all those JFS items total 2.813 million. Uh, item number 23 is a, uh, through community development, this is the authorized, authorization and filing, uh, of our 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan and the 2025 action plan under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. Item 24 is authorizing the use of credit cards for the Veteran Services Commission, total amount of $88,500. And I believe, Commissioners, that that is your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Dumas?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Reese?
Uh, yes. Uh, item number, can we get to the salt? Item number 10. This had a question, and this is a clarifying question. And I'm not an expert on the salt. All I know is that there was some huge potholes this year, and there was mentioned probably that there's a new mix, salt mix, that, uh, might have led to that, or there was, um, uh, we didn't have enough, or, or they weren't, uh, so can you talk about that? Is this salt gonna get those big, I'm talking about not the little bitty ones, I'm talking about these huge potholes? Is there a difference in salt? And if so, are we getting something different, I guess is the word?
Certainly speak to that. Unfortunately, salt in and of itself isn't what causes the potholes. Um, the pothole process is essentially where, um, the pavement, underlying pavement has water infiltration through cracks, and then through the frost heave, you know, the temperature change differential creates those potholes. So the utilization of salt isn't what actually causes the potholes, per se. So the salt materials, um, this isn't gonna be different than what we've used in the past. Uh, to the best of my engineering knowledge, there's not a, there's not a component of that that works that. Some of the potholes are bigger based on just the deterioration of the underlying pavement condition and the, and the ground situation. The repair materials that we use for that, different types of asphalts, different types of, we've used cold patch in the winter time. It has to be a certain temperature before we can actually, and the asphalt plants have to reopen before we can use more traditional asphalts to be able to make those repairs, and that's consistently done across the board. So while we're in the middle of winter, it's almost impossible to do anything other than cold patch asphalt for those, but the salt itself doesn't make a difference in this situation.
Okay, so there's not a new mix out there?
Unfortunately, there's no ma, there's no miracle cure that I know of for that.
Got you. And what's the difference between the blue salt and the white salt? Is that, what we-
It's a visual, it's a, it's a color additive. Uh, it's simply there to be able to see it applied. Uh, salt as it is applied, um, obviously has very white structure in nature, and that doesn't differentiate itself very clearly between, uh, what you see on the ground with snow. So blue is just a, a proprietary additive for, for folks to be able to see a little bit more of the application.
Thank you. These are questions that people would ask me.
Certainly.
Was it some salt out there? Okay, thank you.
The, the county engineers' office does not use pretreatment or beet juice at this time. We've used calcium chloride in the past, that's a practice we're probably going to be discontinuing due to the corrosive, additional corrosive nature of the, uh, of the product. So we are, we are looking at what the state of Ohio's been using with some beet juice, but it is not, um, in and of itself also, uh, a miracle cure either. They're just, it allows us to operate in a slightly different temperature range, uh, to be, it's gonna be a little bit more effective.
Thank you. I had a couple others. Thank you very much. Uh, item number four is our depositories, and we only do these a couple of years. I just want to be clear, I think it's $150 million that would be deposited of taxpayer money into a bank, and then there's certain banks that's on the list who we do business with. I know we're gonna talk about criteria at some point, but I want to be very clear, um, this is something when I was at the city that I had brought up. I, I'm not advocating doing any depositing into any banks that have a track record of not being fair in their loan, uh, their loan practices, uh, because we do collect money from diverse taxpayers. They don't get no break. Robert Bales here, they don't have, the IRS doesn't have a inclusion, exclusion mark, saying that you, you're equal on tax day, but you're unequal every other day. And I want to make sure that we're leveraging our dollars if there's any record of them not investing in certain communities and neighborhoods and municipalities, uh, if they don't recognize our contracts, uh, when you do a contract with the county, uh, because we should have some type of prompt pay. Uh, we want to make sure that the, the small businesses, if they have a contract with us, that those contracts are honored and they can borrow against the contract for working capital. So I want to do a little more deeper diving into these banks. Uh, of course, everybody can get you if you got A1++ credit, but I want to make sure that we're not doing banks that are disinvesting in our county, whether the rural areas, the small municipalities. I also don't want them to have a track record, uh, of not doing the right thing. So, especially now when we're trying to increase homeownership and other things, and small businesses are trying to survive. So I would want to put that on there. This is an opportunity, $150 million of taxpayer money going into depositories where they can also benefit on interest, earned interest on it. Uh, so I don't want to take that lightly, so I just wanted to highlight that. I know today we're just designating, and then we'll have some, uh, each of us will be able to give some type of, uh, criteria, but I just wanted to be very public about, um, my criteria. This is a very important part. This right here is very important, uh, where we put our money, and we want to put our money, uh, with the taxpayers, because we have seniors that are taxpayers, we got businesses, small businesses, folks struggling that are taxpayers, and I want the money to go to the banks that are reinvesting, reinvesting, uh, in the communities, and not just with their foundations. I want to see what are they doing with the money that they're earning the interest on. So, um, I know, I would ask that, um, Mr. Robert Bales somehow also, uh, be able to be involved and let us know, because I know he's dealing with a lot of the small businesses, and what some of the issues are. The other thing that I have is item number six, okay? Um, I want to just be clear on something. And it has on here, Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame. This is not what I asked for. I didn't ask for no security booth. I want to be clear on that. My understanding was that the security booth, that the parks also wanted to have a security booth, is not even located at the Black Music Walker Fame, it's across the street. And I don't think it's fair to put it down as a Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame initiative, to be honest. It's a bank's initiative, uh, because they will be not just at the Black Music Walker Fame, they're gonna be over in the park, they're gonna be looking at, uh, the Paycor area. Uh, so I want, I want to, one, not have this identified as a Black Music Walker Fame thing. This is not a Black Music Walker Fame thing. Now, we have asked to have security down there, and we have security, and we have, knock on wood, pretty safe, but let me say, I'm not happy with the security contract currently. I'm down there a lot, so when I pop up in there, I'm looking to see what's going on. And this current company that has the, uh, we had a company that did a good job, and the people were there, and they're there to prevent any crime. See, the cameras captures the crime after it's over, you know? But it doesn't prevent anything. All we do is get a photo and see if we can find them. We're trying to make sure, and I'm looking for, um, a major pain type of thing down there. Anybody old enough to know that movie? Where the person is not only there just security, but they also letting them know, hey, welcome, and here's what the technology does. I'm not looking for, um, lately, they haven't been around. I go down there on a Sunday, you can't find them with a search warrant, and then they say they're, they're, uh, doing security all the way down Marion Way. They say they doing security up at the Mimi area. So I don't want them come and put no headline on here talking about the Black Music Walk, they'll love to do that. They can say, oh, the Black Music Walker Fame is looking. No, the Black Music Walker Fame did not ask for that. We have security, and this booth is across the street. This is something that's for the whole banks area down there. It's not just the Walk of Fame. So I want to clear that up. And I'm not happy with it being across the street, because you go across the street, I don't need you looking, I need you at the Walk of Fame. And these people have not been showing up lately. I go down there on Sunday, they wasn't there. I was down there on Mother's Day, they wasn't there. I was down there the week before, they wasn't there, and it's always an excuse, well, they down in the garage. Well, then this need to be the garage security, not the Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame security. So I want to, and I've given that to Jeff, and he's working on it in HR, but this new group, I don't like it. It's not the type of thing where you just pick somebody off the street and throw a T-shirt on them. It's the monument. Also want to be clear that the Black Music Walker Fame ongoing is with hotel motel tax and parking tax. I don't want no big story coming, your taxpayer mon, if you stayed in a hotel and if you did some parking. That's what goes to keep this thing going. And I worked hard to put that in the budget process. So this is not your property taxes. I want to be very clear. So, uh, yeah, we got to go back, but this is, I don't see this as a Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame booth. You're not at the Black Music Walker Fame. You've got the parks, Smale Park people in there. You got, you're across the street. Why would I want you across the street instead of in the Walk of Fame? So we've got to come up with something better. I'm glad that we're gonna look at it, but I don't want no reports out. We looking into, ain't nothing to look into. We didn't ask for a Black Music Walker Fame. It ain't at the Black Music Walker Fame. So I just want to highlight that. And there'll be other security folks, there's some other ones down there, that would be utilizing this. So I want to say that, and I think we need to get in order the current contract for security, because I don't feel it's been up to par. Now, originally, yes, whoever that group was, they were there, they did a great job. This new group, every time I go down there, you claim, oh, he was down the street at the Reds. Oh, she was confused, she was inside the garage. I'll see Smale people driving, and they got carts, they driving up and down, got the carts and everything. So we've got to get that in order, and I just wanted to, to highlight that to my, uh, to my colleagues as we move forward, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I too wanted to highlight item number four. Uh, we have been, um, asked to ta, think about depositories in a way that we have not in the past to diversify- diversify a group of individuals that are able to receive the investments. So I want to compliment Jill Schiller for working on this to diversify the pool of folks that we have helping us do our investments. And then items number 16 and 17 are priorities from the Commission on Women and Girls, and so I just wanted to highlight these. These are with Women Helping Women and the YW to do education in schools for boys and girls about healthy relationships and domestic violence. So I want to thank those two organizations for their partnership through these dollars. So with that, if there's not.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. I forgot. One other item was item number eight I want to point out. Item number eight is $381,962.8. This is for replacement equipment and cameras at the Central Riverfront Garage. I want to put that out because even with the booth, which I'm not for right now, I think that was only 200,000. And we've got something on here, the cameras, so people can kind of understand how much this stuff costs. We've got the cameras, and these are just replacements of $381,000 in the garage. So I just wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve of consent agenda items three through eight and 10 through 24.
Second.
Two seconds. Two seconds. Commissioner. enthusiasm, Commissioner. All right.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We've got two exec sessions. Going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property, and executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale, acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.